If I could call me the owner, please stand for flagrant. I fund religions to the life of the United States of America. And to the God with righteous hands, my nation, America, individual, and liberty and justice for all. We want your roll call vote.
Mayor speaking for Councilwoman Virginia Jordan.
Here.
Here.
Item three, to adopt mates agenda, I will entertain a motion at this second.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Your motion to approve, do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll make a second.
Second from Mr. Scordol. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Here you go. All those in favor of adopting tonight's agenda signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion passes. This time I'll entertain a motion to accept our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Please, Mr. Orkin makes a motion to accept another second.
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Bush. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Here you go. All those in favor of adopting tonight's consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to the meeting, open to the talk. All right, we're going to sign.
No, I'm deciding.
Okay, moving on to issues, request applications, by her fighter, Tim Kaiser, in his badge presentation.
Mayor council today, the elected through your spin highs are from the very firm for the for bad change. Tim has completed over 300 hours of training for very permanent and that's not including their training or internal and very firm training. Tim moved to St. Francis in May of 2014 for capable role. He's currently employed at Metro Transit as a Transit Supervisor. Joined in St. Francis, very firm in May of 2015. Before Metro Transit, he's worked at Old Town Comedy and then on Dispatch. Before that, he worked as security fighters, patrol officer supervisor, and added. He worked in security, had to leave the Navy, but in six years, he held associate degree in criminal justice. He just recently got married, he was married to Christina, and she's going to be doing the painting tonight, and they have three kids, Summer Logan and Aurora, so this time we'll ask Christina and love.
Congratulations. Welcome to the quick room. Appreciate it. Okay. Okay. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Number one, ordinance two twenty-four stepping series, in order, ordinance authorizing the sale of city surplus property to industry properties and else. This time I'll entertain people.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt ordinance two two four.
Mr. Scordol makes a motion to adopt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bush makes a second, is there any discussion before I call for the vote? Here you go. This will be a roll call vote, Mr. Scordol.
Aye.
Mr. Orkin?
Aye.
Mr. Bush?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Okay, resolution twenty sixteen dash forty-three, a resolution adjusting the tax levy for bonded competitors.
Good evening, Mayor Councilwoman, your agenda slate, there are actually two resolutions dealing with tax levies for 2017. The first one is adjusting the debt service levy. We do this to keep the debt service levy at steady. And just to let you know, the reason, we have to take out the 2007, that's the bond that was advanced cross over refunded by the 2013, and that will be paid off in 2017. So then we'll go into the 2000, making payments out of 2013. And then the other resolution is for the overall tax levy, which is our general fund levy for capital improvements and the debt service levy. And it also sets the public hearing for December fifth, which is December fifth, to discuss the budget and set the budget. Right now, this, the general fund levy is balanced, so this argument is a zero percent increase in levy. Do we have any questions?
Those have questions. Okay, this time I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to 2016 dash forty-two.
Okay, Mr. Orkin makes a motion to adopt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, do I have a question? Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Here you go. All those in favor of adopting resolution 2016 dash forty-three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Moving on to resolution 2016 dash forty-four. Is that the one I was?
Yes.
So this is, what's, what's the year for that? Okay. Adjusting the tax levy for bonded, no. Providing preliminary approval of both 2016 tax levy, collectible in 2017, and setting a budget hearing. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to 2016 dash forty-four.
Okay, Mr. Orkin makes a motion to adopt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, do I have a question? Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Here you go. All those in favor of adopting resolution 2016 dash forty-three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Moving on to resolution 2016 dash forty-four. Is that the one I was?
Yes.
So this is, what's, what's the year for that? Adjusting the tax levy for bonded, no. Providing preliminary approval of both 2016 tax levy, collectible in 2017, and setting a budget hearing. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, resolution 2016 dash forty-four.
Okay, Mr. Bush makes a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Orkin, is there any discussion before I call for the question? Here you go. All those in favor of adopting resolution 2016 dash forty-four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution 2016 dash forty-five, the resolution for planning October as domestic violence awareness. Quick question, Mr. Orkin. Is this for this year, or is this on?
Well, it would be.
Is this for the early October?
This year, and then we would probably do one every year that they would pull and say their law.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 2016 dash forty-five.
Okay, Mr. Orkin makes a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Uh, is there any discussion before I call for the question? Here you go. All those in favor of resolution 2016 dash forty-five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Okay, reports of consultants and staff members. Mr. Bush.
Good evening, Mayor Council. In practice this evening is a known resolution regarding speed limits in the Sallis Street area. If you recall, at the August fifteenth meeting, Council was approached by a resident indicating concern regarding the speed limits in that area. And in addition to the speed limits, also was some concern about the curve along that roadway. So, staff has evaluated the potential for the designation as a rural residential district. And if you may or may not recall, based on previous discussions of some areas where we've modified some speed limits recently, the rural residential district requires that access spacings are 300 feet or less per quarter mile or more. So we evaluated the streets within that area and determined that a majority of them do comply with the rural residential district designation. Those that don't are isolated sections, which really don't, does not make sense to post a 35 increases to 55 and reduce back to 35. So based on the analysis conducted, there is a resolution, in practice this evening, designated in Sallis Street, Alameda, two thirty-second avenue, two thirty-third lane, two thirty-third court, two thirty-fourth court, and two thirty-fifth avenue in that area as 35 miles per hour, that's a lot above the statute. And then second, indivisions that seeking authorization from councilmen saw the curve warning signs that are recommended along that, along that roadway. The advisory speed for that curve would be 25 miles an hour. So with that, I'll ask any questions that Councilmen have?
Okay, so you're looking for two actions?
Two separate actions. A resolution and that I'm hoping for the curve that man's curve.
Okay, is anybody having questions? Mr. Orkin?
I can tell you have a question, and I'll forgive you if you guys discussed this council meeting that once, but I used to live in this neighborhood, looks awful lot like the neighborhood I do live in. And is that what we, I, so I assume the neighborhood I live in right now is probably not classified as rural residential unless you go up and go do an analysis. Seems like we business speed limits an awful lot, and we have Jared go up and go do a study or we go do something. Would it be possible, I don't want to spend a bunch of money, but it would be, be possible to do an inventory, muscle draw, and do this analysis and identify the neighborhoods that have the 300 foot spacing or you want, you know, basically do what you did for this neighborhood for the rest of the city, it'd be done? Or do we just want to do it every time somebody comes in and wants to have their neighborhood? Seems like we answer, we send Jared up, we give him an action item, at least a couple times a year about the speed limits in neighborhoods, rather than rural residential, 230 foot whatever. Do we just need to do an inventory sometime and just be done? It's kind of independent of this motion to, what you're asking us to approve, but it just kind of comes to mind. I don't know, Joe, or if you have any ideas?
Sure, definitely, I do that. I guess, right now, says purely unless it's posted at 35, the speed limit about to fall to 55. So really, the only, I mean, Council a couple years ago did adopt a sign policy, indicated that we're, that the city is interested in reducing the amount of sign law in roadways. But if that's not a concern, the entire city could be evaluated, analyzed, and then determined as to which areas need the, need the 300 foot spacing from the rural residential classification, which areas don't, certainly doesn't provide that map. Also, in that, that way you can decide whether or not you adopt or as, oh, first, we can solve the sign, so, absolutely.
Okay. I wouldn't mind seeing something like that sometime, we can talk about it as a different topic if you'd like to.
Why doesn't the staff go back and evaluate that report for yet? Is that what it's all going to entail? And then just hash out some of the details?
Pretty good. Any other questions for Mr. Orkin?
Just curious here, how much is it for like a speed limit sign? You have rough numbers at all?
Forty-seven dollars. Sign that. It's the one I raised. There was, that I signed today.
Anything else? This time I'll entertain a motion for resolution number 2016 dash forty-six.
I'll take that motion to approve.
Mr. Bush makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Orkin, is there any discussion before I call for the question? Here you go. All those in favor of passing resolution number 2016 dash forty-six, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. This time I'll entertain a motion to place the 25 mile an hour speed limit on.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, Mr. Orkin makes a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scordol makes a second. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Here you go. All those in favor of signing that curve, 25 miles per hour, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Orkin. Okay, moving down to our city administration.
I'm the mayor, members of the council. We have three separate contracts or exclusive right to sell for the property, property is located just north of the liquor store, the East Shaw site, and property just across the road from our Pulpacor's, please, facility. These three contracts would be for a period of six months. Broker fee is seven percent of the sale that the city council brings to it, and it will place area realty. Staff has attempted to promote these particular properties, like sending out mailings with lists, and then putting things on the website, code calling, and gather machine, build no interest from developers. And so we think that giving them a professional real estate broker may get more outside interest to these properties, we're hoping. So for tonight is the consideration of these three exclusive right to sell contracts.
Oh yeah, I'm not stating that those particular brokers have a good deal of experience with government property.
Do you have any questions? Was there any other brokers that were interested in doing this for us?
We did not go for a formal RFP. This, this relationship has stemmed from other professional working relationships with this particular broker, and then their history of government owned lands and how they facilitated in the past, that's kind of how they came to our attention, but we did not go for it.
So we, oh, we approached them, or they approached us?
Yeah, we would have approached them.
Okay, no, we don't, there's nobody there that we, is a relative or a friend of an employee here that we know that have that.
Or. It's strictly a professional relationship.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think it's a good idea to give a practice six months to see what goes.
Okay, and I will entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, will you make a motion that we approve the listing contract, the properties that are listed in the memo?
Okay, we have a motion to approve, but Mr. Scordol, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, but Mr. Orkin, is there any discussion before I call for the question?
Yes. The property at St. Francis Boulevard, is that just north of the liquor store? Is that correct? Correct.
Okay. Anything else? Here you go. All those in favor of awarding these contracts, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do you have anything else, Mr.?
Yes, I don't know, the mayor, members of the council, finance director, and myself have been working with the PFA and financial advisor at Northland Securities, determining a plan for the wastewater treatment facility funding. Been talking it through with all the council, we determined that the best course of action at this time, and it'll probably move relatively quickly, is to bring back a proposal to borrow the 21 million plus $3 million grant from the Public Facilities Authority. And once we do that, we would have to maintain a balance of $6 million within that funding mechanism through the PFA in order to remain eligible for the future $6 million in grant money once the state legislature does finally pass a bonding bill. So what we would have to do is move and borrow money from the PFA, and then borrow temporary bonds to the team of $6 million so that we can maintain the $6 million balance with the PFA, in the hopes that that will carry us over through the next legislative session to get the additional $6 million in grants. So, once we move and borrow from the PFA, as long as we maintain that $6 million balance from them, and do not draw down that, we'll remain eligible for the future grant funding assuming they pass that bonding, though by all indications, those are very popular projects with the legislature, and they just kind of got derailed through other projects that were, they're evidence sometime passing. So we're anticipating that we would get the $6 million, we just need to buy ourselves more time. And to have to answer any questions, this kind of developed in the last week or two.
Yeah, we started scrambling after the governor said he wouldn't call another session, special Any questions for Mr. Coleman?
These are all the options that we have, so it's be eligible to receive that extra $6 million?
Yeah, if, if we just borrow the 21 million, $3 million grant from the PFA, and we spend that all down, we will no longer be eligible for that future $6 million grant. So we have to get an additional bond that is buy ourselves more time and maintain that balance of the PFA account. Then the question is going to be, if those temporary bonds for $6 million be for one year or two years, because just hypothetically, if a bonding goes through the next session, do we want to be doing this again next year? So are there some questions that, how are we still trying to hash out that tentative plan at this point?
Also, I've been talking, and Mr. Coleman talked with Senator Benson's people, the government's people, and Speaker Dow's people. So there is a meeting that Senator Benson's people are putting together a phone conference, and Mr. Coleman, myself, and all the groups involved, to talk more about this. I think they understand the urgency that we have on this whole thing. So I don't think that's a big problem. Are you looking for any kind of motions?
No, that was just a verbal update again, if there's any other questions.
Really?
Everything works out good, and we received, you know, that $6 million, of course, that $3 million, I'd really like to see us to evaluate the water rates, consumer rates for the people. So that's really high, I would say.
I just have one question, just really a comment. When this is all said and done, and the desk is settled, and we get a chance to catch it back again, I wouldn't mind maybe talking through some lessons learned. Now I don't know if we're ever going to do this again, because there could be another infrastructure project like this has been come along, but in my daily life, I'm prisoner to whatever the US government does, but their budget cycles, continuing resolutions, and I wouldn't mind sitting down, just having a, what did we learn, and we could do it all over, and knowing that our state government can be dysfunctional once in a while. Or is there a different road that we want to go down next time we have to do this to hedge our bets against stuff like this happening?
Would we be looking at borrowing right now at the third year or 20 year, and then change, give them additional $6 million funding?
So, right now, they're waiting on an analysis from the PFA of the 20 year versus 30 year. Unfortunately, due to timing, I mean, it's holding on for a special session, third week in August, and they have, they took out that first round of temporary bonds come November first, or we have limited, among meetings, and times it's really crunched at 20 versus 30. But again, we're going to report back tomorrow, and then we're hoping to really hash some things out with the staff, or we'll give back a recommendation, I think, would probably be the best way to handle it.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Moving on, request for councilmembers, Mr. Scordol?
The only two things I would have is the basement roundabouts are almost done, and they are done, but eventually, all the equipment's going to get out of the way, and we'll have our streets back. And secondly, a few weeks later, I just want to say I took the opportunity to spend a few minutes and watched the fire department use some water rescue. A few weeks ago, it looks like a good time was had by all, also like a good training opportunity. I'm glad I stopped on and tried to make a point to kind of teach tabs what you guys are up to, and see what you do on a, on a day-to-day basis, but depending on the training and stuff you go over there. Is education okay? I appreciate the invitation.
All right, Mr. Orkin?
I have nothing to require.
Mr. Bush?
Just to remind you about the roundabouts, we are installing companies, installing lights on both sides, is that correct? Streetlights?
Yeah.
Okay. I've already had some people ask them about that, but. Last week, councilmember Orkin and I attended the swearing in ceremony for three of our officers, so, so good job, Acting Chief Schweiger, and congrats again to our, our fighter tonight, here, Tim Kaiser, and it's all congrats. That's all I have.
Okay, reports from the mayor. Well, of course, I intended the, I, what would be, which, she was just a god, she still is, her mom dead too, she was just asking, she can't believe she asked her own name at St. Francis. But, one of the things that impressed me the very most about her, she's very humble. This gal has started, since she was four years old, wanted to be on this team, go into the Olympics. And a lot of times, very successful athletes, very successful business people can be emery looker. She is just as humble as me. She's just a good downer person, which shows me that her family is excellent, strong family members. And it was just a pleasure to watch her. It was a lot of fun. They arrived, she came in a police car, and the rest of the family came in a white car. It was just an amazing thing to watch. You had a lot of their family there, the same wall, and a lot on the east side of the metro area, their family, and they were here, so. It was, it was a very good, good. The next thing, and I failed to mention this at the last meeting, nice job of Better Street Drive. That, that street has turned out really, really nice compared to what we have. You know, I, this was a two-phase thing to try and, and make that thing, say for the first phase was getting the path in, and second phase is getting that, that road fixed up, and speeding it down a bit. It's much safer. I didn't get almost several, many times, trying to turn into my street, off here, because people were turning around that curb, they couldn't see that. So, now there's, there's a good line of sight, and I just think you guys did, just did a really, really good job. Thank you. All right, is there any old business? New business? I have some. Been contacted by a group of mayors in the state, there's quite a few of you, actually, 45, 45 different mayors. They organized a group last year across the state to work to highlight the importance of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure in the communities in Minnesota. So what they do is they'll go down to the legislature, and they'll do a lot of lobbying for projects for bike tabs, things like this, to move people around and keep that over. Where are they asked if we want to join them? Be a part of that? So I'm looking for, for some event for each of them. Is there any cost to this at all? Not that I'm aware of at all. Nothing in your direction, or to that, I don't think there is.
I think we should do it, especially with concern the trial that was proposed, I think it was last year, around four, that was going to run, 14 mil, not trial, I think. Um, I think we can all use more like that, and that should work, so, I think we should.
Mr. Scordall, you're on board?
Sure, why not?
I will go out there for tomorrow, and bring up more about that. Is there anything else to add, Joe? Can you stay in the chair, thank you.